He's gonna wait, he's gonna count it down.
That's right, that's a countdown.
Is this your reflection time?
That's right. Trying to give Councilman Ombe some time for the invocation. All right, good evening and welcome to the Heath City Council meeting, August 12th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. We will call to order if you would all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you today with thankful hearts for the blessing of gathering, freedom, and peace. We acknowledge you as the source of all wisdom, and we seek your guidance for the matters before this council. Lord, we ask you to place a hedge of protection around our military, our first responders, and all those who serve to keep us safe, both here, at home, and around the world. Strengthen them, protect them, and grant them courage in every task. We pray for peace in Ukraine and Israel, Lord. May these conflicts come to swift resolve, and that the citizens and lands begin to heal. We pray also for our leaders at every level, federal, state, county, and city. Grant us and them wisdom to make sound decisions, discernment to know what is right, and integrity lead with justice and compassion. Bless the work done in this meeting tonight, Lord, and it may serve the good of all and bring honor to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge the American flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas.
All right, very good. Thank you, Councilman. Okay, moving into agenda item number two, this is our public comments section. Mr. Alexander?
We have no one here for public comment.
Very well, thank you, sir. We'll move into agenda item number three. This is our city manager comments and council comments. Mr. Alexander?
I have no comments this evening.
Very well, thank you. Counsel at this time, the floor is open for any comments you may have. Councilman Horn?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that I had the amazing opportunity to visit both Linda Lyon Elementary and Kane Middle School on their first day back, and I just want to say it was a really great experience. The energy from the students, from the teachers, and from the parents was just palpable. And I just believe it's such a special time of year, and I, on behalf of myself, and I hope on the council, I just want to say to the students and families in Heath, I wish you a fantastic school year ahead. We're proud of our schools, and I am just so excited to see all the great things that our students will accomplish.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
It was, it was pretty exciting to, to see Dr. V chose to be in Heath and kick off their school year. And so, again, we just want to, we want to be in mindful prayer for the students and for the staff and for all those involved. And thank you, counsel, for being there and greeting them. I'm sure that was, that was pretty cool. All right, counsel, any other comments that you have? None at this time? All right, we'll move into agenda item number four. This is our consent agenda. I believe everybody's had time to look this over. We'll talk through the items. 4 dot A, action regarding the minutes of the July 22nd, 2025 regular meeting. 4 dot B, action regarding an ordinance approving an annual update to the service and assessment plan for the Hacienda del Lago Public Improvement District. And 4 dot C, action regarding a resolution to designate an additional authorized signator to the city of Heath's accounts with the American National Bank of Texas. So again, I believe you've all had time to review this, so the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Ombe. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Thurgood to approve the consent agenda as stated. So the motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. All right, moving into agenda item number five, these are items for individual consideration. We will start with 5 dot A, this is discussion and action regarding a resolution establishing the Parks and Trails of Heath. This is our PATH fundraising committee, and we have the honor to have Mr. Justin Holland as the newly elected Park Board Chairman. Congratulations, that is a designation that, that was, that was done amongst the peers of the Park Board. And so, congratulations, we're happy to see you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and counsel. We, at our last regular meeting, it was actually a special call meeting. There's a, the PATH, which is the Parks and Trails of Heath Fundraising Committee, it was a resolution that required a vote of the Parks Board to come to your consideration tonight. It's something that the Park Board has been working on for a while, specifically John Walker. We have a fairly new board now, and we did pass that unanimously. We only had one member missing. He was not able to make it, Ben Fields, but he did express his support of the resolution. And I'd like to walk you through this item. If we can go to the next slide, do I have that or does somebody else have that?
I have.
Okay. Okay, discussion action regarding resolution establishing the Parks and Trails of Heath Fundraising Committee. The PATH program is something that has been in the works for a while, as I mentioned. Been in a lot of discussion with the mayor about this, something that I believe that he supports, and we talked about, and I think there'll be some good discussion on it. I'm going to go through just a few things about PATH, and then also exciting things that we have going on. As you know, behind us directly here, the Town Center Park renovation is going on. It's the flagship park of our city, and it will be magnificent, magnificent when it's finished, and you guys have had some lively discussion about that, I know. PATH is, is a fundraising committee, and we get into it to where, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to engage the Heath community, we'd like to engage citizens, individuals, and businesses to have a buy-in to their local parks and outdoor lifestyle, open, open spaces and green spaces and parks. It's also a way that we can be fiscally responsible and have people to give of their own money so that it doesn't strain the city's resources, which are desperately needed at the time. One of the projects, the sport courts here, you'll see on the left side there, these are pickleball courts, and three of them are fully covered. Kathy and Bob Tolbert gave a contribution of $200,000 to make sure that once these things are done, they will be, they will be covered. So these are the types of, that's an extraordinary, extraordinary donation, but we'll be going after some even a little smaller than that, too. A new addition to the city hall beautification is, have you, some of you have seen, an anonymous donor gave $30,000 to help with some of the crumbling and disintegrating things that were, you know, the, the monument was kind of falling down. And so, now we have something that people can be proud of up there, as well as Donnie Watts with D and D, he, he, he put in a lot of his own work and, and donations to, to put it up. So we had Donnie Watts and the anonymous donor with $30,000 there. The purpose of the PATH fundraising committee would be an advisory group to help raise private funds for park, trail, and civic beautification projects. Were we able to get them the Q and A sheet in their packets? If not, I have one that I can send to you guys. I put together basically a council Q and A overview, questions like, why do we need a PATH fundraising committee if we already have a park board? Will this committee have control over spending or contracts? Who can serve on the PATH? A lot of these things, which we'll go through here. It's an advisory-only committee. It cannot accept or spend any funds directly. It only recommends priorities to the park board, and the city council will have all final approval of use of funds. The committee composition, this is something that we talked a lot about. There's no cap on members, but they all must be Heath residents. We want as much buy-in as we can get from the entire membership and the entire citizenship of Heath. The park board and city council will be the ones who appoint members of the, the PATH committee to two-year staggered terms. One park board will be on the, the board itself, not the chair, the city manager, and the chair of the park board, or of the PATH committee will be ex officio members and run those meetings. Meetings will be ad hoc, so at any time, the chair could call, and two members or the city manager, the secretary records and summarizes the discussions, and their sole responsibility is going to be to go out and be the cheerleaders for our Parks and Trails of Heath and solicit donations, recommended, recommend unfunded project priorities. And then, it's important to note that the PATH committee and the park board are going to be driving the, the priorities of the council and the CIP, our Parks Master Plan, our Comprehensive Plan. So this is not a rogue event where people come up and we have a new meeting, and then it's not consistent with what the vision of the council's and, and the city leadership is. Donations will be submitted directly to the city. No committee, no park board, no council will, will, will take funds. The, the checks, the donations will go into the city treasury and will be guarded there. The city staff maintains the project list, which, which we have, we have somewhat of a loose unfunded priorities list, which includes connecting some of our trails from Terry, Hubbard, and Stonely area to back here at the Town Center Park. Those will be some things that we can work on, but just to note, the, the very next park board meeting, we've called, and park board member, Bill Bromley's here as well tonight, we're going to have a workshop. So if any of you would like to come to our next one, it'll probably be one of the more, the agenda that the park board's probably never had before. We're going to talk about a wish list and a priority list. I can take questions from the council if, if you would like, and I'll try to do my best, or we can have any discussion, but that is it. I recommend to the council that you all take action and approve this PATH committee, so we can start soliciting donations and make this park and others and trails as best as they can as we roll it out.
Well, thank you, Mr. Holland. Like I said, again, it's a pleasure to have you on that board, and, and big thanks to all of those board members that served past, because obviously, we wouldn't have a Town Center Park, and they've done a really great job getting it there, and then we're looking forward to seeing what you guys do on this park boards. Thank you, guys, for being here. A little bit of some history, too, when Mr. Lasher was here as our city manager. What we did was, we kind of started working on the, the PATH. The PATH program goes back to, I believe, 2018. We have a number of people that, you know, they donate monthly, and, and then we've had a series of donations that have kind of all happened through the PATH program. And so, one of the things that we got to talking about with the park board this last year was, hey, how can we get, you know, more traction, get more, you know, optics on this program, and get more people involved? And, and so, it was, it was great to see that the park board started working on the PATH program and started trying to stand this up and, and working as kind of the steering committee, and then now, it's kind of taken a bit of a time to get to this level of formality. So it's exciting to see a resolution come tonight. And, and two, I would like to echo, and this council knows this, but, you know, the Tolbert's donation was, was a legacy donation for this park, and great to see them do that. Great to see the donor that repainted, paid to repaint the chambers, paid to redo the walls and the restrooms, and see the interior of the lobby get updated. It was nineteen, I kind of say it was 1982, I don't really know the year, but there's a lot of old, old furniture that I had to ask the chief where we could hide it, and, and get some things updated. And then also to D and D, they do so much for the city, and seeing them take on the monument and seeing the hardscaping. Also want to make a, a note, too, that you guys saw, and you might have seen as you were doing some handshakes with the kids, is that the ISD also dressed up their ingress egress to kind of match what city hall's doing. So a big, a big thank you to Dr. V and his team for making that happen. So, again, I, I thank you, and I, and I'm very excited to see this really take shape in a, in a, in a great way over this next year. And, and two, we're going to be talking later in this agenda about some of kind of our high-level macro focus points as you guys go into that workshop. Just give, give a little bit of focus as you guys start pinpointing some, some opportunities. All right, very good. At this time, counsel, do you have any questions for the chair? No questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Holland.
Cindy, thank you for going to Kane today. Hopefully, if there, if there was any commotion, it wasn't my kids.
They were absolutely perfect. Excellent, excellent.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, counsel, do you have any discussion items or additional questions for staff? If there's no comments or questions for discussion, then the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the resolution establishing the Parks and Trails of Heath, the PATH program fundraising committee, under Chairman Justin Holland.
Very well. We have a motion on the floor. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Myers. Any further discussion or questions? All right, the motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously.
Thanks again, counsel. Thanks again, chairman. All right, moving into agenda item 5 dot B, discussion and action to schedule a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget and plan of the municipal services. Mr. Ayers?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. This item is to set the public hearing date for the proposed FY26 budget before we move forward with that. I want to go with, with you all the budget adoption calendar. On Wednesday, August 6th, we filed, we filed the proposed budget with the city sever with NORMA, which aligns with the Texas Local Government Code. Tonight, tonight, we'll set the public hearing date for September 9th. We'll also record the vote on the proposed tax rate for FY26, and set the public hearing on the proposed tax rate for September 23rd. On Friday, August 22nd, we plan on publishing the public, the budget notice in the newspaper and on the city website, as well as a tax rate hearing notice. And on September 9th, you can't, you can't have the hearing and adopt the proposed tax rate on the same day. So we'll have that public hearing on September 9th, and following that, on September 23rd, city council meeting, we'll have adoption of the FY26 budget, have the public hearing on the tax rate, as well as adopting it. We'll also have to ratify the property tax increase in the budget and adopt the FY26 fee schedule. This is the recommended motion for moving forward, setting that, that public hearing date. If you have any questions or comments, feel free to ask.
All right, very good. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
No, not pertaining to the motion that's on the table.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, I guess, would be for the budget? Is that what you're referencing? Do you have secondary questions or comments?
No, not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Any other council members with any questions, concerns, or thoughts? All right, very well. The chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I move that we schedule a public hearing on the fiscal 2026 proposed budget and plan of municipal services for Tuesday, September 9th, at 6:30 PM during the regular city council meeting in the city hall council chambers located at 200 Lawrence Drive, Heath, Texas, 75032, and authorize the city secretary to publish the required notice on the hearing in a newspaper of general circulation within the county on or before August 22nd, 2025.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor as stated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Councilman Horn. Any other questions or discussion items? Very well, the motion moves. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Moving into 5 dot C, discussion and action on a resolution regarding the fiscal year 2025, 2026 proposed tax rate, taking record vote, setting the public hearing and adoption date. Mr. Ayers?
Just as a background on the 2026 proposed tax rate, originally, we recommended the de minimis rate of .28383, but since that, that de minimis rate exceeds the voter approval rate, and due to the time constraints, in moving forward, the de minimis rate, we're recommending to move forward with, with the voter approval rate of .275565. The budget filing date was August 6th, in order of us, which prevents us from our ability to move forward with the de minimis rate, that actually would have been filed on July the 18th. And staff is recommending, recommending approval of the voter approval rate instead.
Okay.
Resolution highlights, requires council's votes on the proposed tax rate, the voter approval rate, scheduling the public hearing and adoption date for September 23rd, 2025, at 6:30 PM during our, during the council meeting, and also publishing and posting required notices in compliance with the Texas Local Tax Code. And this is the adoption calendar for the tax rate, Tuesday, August 12th, today. We record, record vote on the proposed tax rate for FY26, set the public hearing and adoption date on the proposed tax rate, publish the tax hearing notice on the 22nd, and have the, the hearing and adoption on September 23rd, as well as ratifying the property tax increase in, in the budget through roll call vote. Any questions or comments on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Floor is yours.
Thank you. So Jay, did, did we just miss the timing of this, just from our cadence of meetings and, and what have you? And, and if, if that's the case, what kind of measures do we have in place next year so that we don't get caught up? Because it, it appears to me that the, the budget that was rolled forward had a certain amount of required spend to that, and now I think, Mr. Alexander, you and staff have had to roll that back in order to meet the proposed rate now, which is the voter approval rate.
We're, we're recommending keeping the appropriations that we proposed initially the same.
Right.
You may recall, in the proposed budget, there's $725,000 transfer over to your general CIP.
Right.
And so, initially, in the preliminary budget that we presented to council and the proposed budget, we filed with the city secretary's office, we had intended to fund that wholly from current revenues coming in next year, which was including the higher property tax revenue we had planned for. Understanding that voter approval rate is lower than, than the de minimis rate, you know, that's, we'll have $250,000 less essentially, $260,000 less to, and property tax revenue coming in to help fund that transfer. That said, we have excess fund balance in the general fund to cover that difference.
Right.
And so, we're not recommending any change in our proposed appropriations. It's just the revenue side is changing by the $260,000.
Gotcha.
It's a big utilization through the general fund.
Got it. So then, in terms of the measures for next year to stay adherent to the schedule so that we don't get caught up like we are this year, what, what do you propose?
Well, moving forward, we'll, we'll start the budget process earlier to make sure we hit that, that de minimis rate date. If it, if it exceeds the voter approval rate, and we'll, I mean, we're just going to keep that in mind whenever we're putting the budget calendar together, just moving forward, just trying to stay in, in line with that, because I think, well, the, the previous year, the de minimis rate was under the voter approval rate, so we didn't have to go through.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was under. And this was the first time it actually exceeded it. So, and then, you have to go, even though it doesn't trigger an automatic election, you still have to go through the processes if you are. So you have to submit your, your budget, it's 78 days prior to the November election. So
Right.
We're just going to keep that in mind and update our budget calendar to make sure we hit those dates.
Okay.
Which doesn't mean that, that they, that they will be looking to always go to the de minimis tax rate.
Yeah.
Right? It's just, hey, from a timing standpoint, we're going to be mindful of those
Yeah.
timing disparities, right? Because obviously, in this, in this scenario, it might not have been Plan A for the budget. However, you know, we want to be mindful of, of lowering the tax rate is not always a bad thing.
Agreed.
Right? So, so there's some positive to that.
We will be submitting, to, to more to the point, we will be submitting the proposed budget to you in the June going forward.
Right.
No later than the first week of July, to make sure we have plenty of time to adjust the schedule however we need to, to adopt whatever rate we need to, even a rate that may be above the voter approval rate requiring an election. It runs on the same, essentially the same timeline as the de minimis rate.
Sure.
Understanding that when we submit that proposed budget to you at that timeframe, it will be incomplete. It will be based on a bunch of estimates on what we think the tax rules will look like, what we think the tax rates will look like, because we won't get those calculations from Rockville Central Appraisal District till September 7th.
Right.
Right? And so, it, it, it's a bit of an odd situation to have to be in, but, but in order to meet the, the timeframe we've got to meet, we can't adopt the tax rate earlier than 30 days after the date we submit the proposed budget to you. In order to do that, and to, you know, meet that timeframe.
You just roll the clock back. Got it. Thanks, Steve, and thanks, Jay, very much. Appreciate the explanation.
Lot of fire drills on this.
Yeah.
Appreciate your hard work. Lot, lot, lot of weekend work. Very, very appreciative of your hard work, guys.
Just needed it all done, weeks over there.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Well, you know, good, good for us. We now understand, you know, let's, let's navigate, right? There's, there's moving targets on this, and so, the navigation was needed. Very well. Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Is the, is the tax rate then lower than it was last year?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It would have been under the de minimis rate.
It would have been, it would have been either way.
Right.
Yeah.
I just think that's important to note.
Agreed. I think that'll be a welcomed piece.
Thanks, Jay. That's my problem.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Couple things, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ombe, your recommendations?
Just, again, just want to confirm, nothing in that proposed budget we received is, is going to be cut. And I think that we added in there for growth in infrastructure, simply a, a revenue side movement.
That, that's exactly right, Council. Hey, we're just, we're just reducing the property side revenue in the general fund by $260,000 to match up with the voter approval rate, and we'll cover that difference through the excess general fund fund balance that we have.
Very good. Thank you. And I guess, just a point of interest, what do you think drove that de minimis rate being lower than the voter approval? Is it the valuations?
No, it's, it appears to have everything to do with what's called unused increment. And so, under the law, when, when the city council approves a rate that's lower than the voter approval rate, the difference between that rate and the voter approval rate is called unused increment. And you can carry that forward on a rolling three-year basis. And for the past several years, there's been about 10 and a half or so unused increment that have been added to your voter approval rate to get it above the de minimis rate. We've used all that up except for a very small piece of it this year. This is the last year we'll have any of that left. And because of a small piece of it, the de minimis rate has now risen above the voter approval rate. Third, third month, right?
No, I appreciate that. No, now I get it.
Math is hard.
City municipal, the math in particular, right?
You may remember, the de minimis, the de minimis rate is, is just the rate you need, three and a half a million dollars in property tax revenue, right? That's, that's a set figure, one and a half cents or whatever it is. And so, that gets added to your no new revenue rate to come up with your de minimis rate. And then that gets compared to that voter approval rate, which is three and a half percent above your no new revenue rate. And then if you have increment, you can add to that, that gets, that's what gets it above that de minimis rate. When that goes away, the de minimis rate rises above.
Very good, thank you.
I'll try to work on saving.
I thought you did good breaking that down. I appreciate it. It's good. It's good. All right. Any other questions for staff, council? Very well. Thank you, Mr. Eres. You have a recommended motion?
Sir, and this this motion sets the, will set the proposed rate, proposed tax rate, which is the highest rate you would be able to adopt on September twenty third. You could adopt a lower rate, but whatever you set today would be the highest rate that you could adopt, you could adopt on September twenty third, or on September twenty third. This motion also sets the public hearing for the tax rate on the same day, September twenty third, that you'll take action on the 30th.
It's the twenty third or the twenty second?
Twenty third.
Twenty third? Got it. Okay. All right. At this time, the chair will open the floor to entertain a motion.
I move that the city council approved the proposed property tax rate for fiscal year 2025-26 at point two seven five six five zero per one hundred dollar taxable valuation, and that we schedule a public hearing and adoption date on the proposed tax rate for Tuesday, September twenty third, 2025, at six thirty P M at the regular scheduled city council meeting to be held in the council chambers at City Hall, two hundred Lawrence Drive, Heath, Texas, seven five zero three two.
All right. Very good.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a second on the floor by Councilman Dodson. Roll call. The motion moves.
Okay, Councilman Obi. Yea or nay?
Yea.
Mayor Per Tim Dodson.
Yea.
Councilwoman Thurgood. Mayor Pcler.
Yea.
Councilman Mormon.
Yea.
Councilman Myers.
Yea.
And Councilwoman. Yea.
Very good. Passes unanimously. Thank you, council. All right, we will move into agenda item five dot D, update on the construction of the new public works facility located at twelve eighty four FM seven forty. Mr. Creed.
Hello, in the hearing, council. This will be brief. So, well, there we go. This is a project update for a public works facility. I don't know how many of the new new council members for this year have been able to see our little house out here on seven forty. But it was in sore need of of updating and getting the guys something else that we could work out of.
So much so that we have a tree that's growing through the floor. We had an employee, maybe, maybe not, find a hole in the floor. There's asbestos, mold, other things.
Mosquito.
I just want to be very elaborate on how beautiful it was.
It's in very poor condition. Recently this year, we we had a raccoon come up to the floor in our server room and destroy it. So Danny had to go out there and put it back together for that. He didn't love that, by the way.
Which to that point, we do now have secondary skater systems running parallel and all kinds of secondary verdurables.
And we did work to seal that room up. Cause that to not continue.
Brighter days ahead, Brian. Let's see it.
All right, this this is a an aerial shot of what we have out there right now, and you'll see the little farmhouse there to your to your left. It was built in nineteen seventy five. It's forty three hundred square foot home. Like we said, it's in, it's in fairly poor condition. It has two one car, two, it has two car garages are separated by a middle pillar in between that we use as essentially our our public works facility shop that that will hold one zero turn in each one and a little bit of shelving. So it it doesn't, it doesn't really facilitate what we needed. We knew that. We also co-locate our skater and and our IT equipment in in the same building. And we did have some office space in here, as well as the living room was used as a as a break room. Again, it was, it was needed to be updated. So the the area to your right there is also owned by the city, to that, to the right of that is also owned by the city, and that is the proposed location for for this facility that that was agreed upon when you guys awarded this. So in September of twenty twenty three, the council approved a CEO for the public works facility, renovation of Town Center Park and the new DPS locations. In November, the council awarded design to Premium Milligan. And in December, the construction of the project was awarded to J C Commercial, four point two. We brought back a change order in January and increased it to four point seven. With that, we added back a bay that was originally in the in the scope of work, but out of concerns for for budget, we shrunk the building back and took that bay back off. But the bids came in good enough, we felt like we could put that back in. The council agreed, and the change order passed. In March twenty twenty five, that the project was kicked off and construction has begun. Again, this is the original bid. The architecture and fees was three hundred and seventy thousand, including architect and civil engineer and things of that nature. All construction costs were four point two million. Square footage of the building was ten thousand eight hundred and sixty feet. We brought back a change order and added twenty four hundred feet, which is the extra bay, and that did increase the cost of four point seven. With that included, a little more parking space, we had to move a fire hydrant, there's more sprinkler system, we added two heaters, things like that. So it, there's more than just the building. Designed by FMI and the project management through the item as well, so FMI is currently doing the project management on site. We awarded it to J C Commercial. The original contract time was three hundred days. With the change order, it was increased to three hundred and thirty days. They started this past March with their weather days that we have added. They should be on pace to have completion next March. This is the front view of how the building will look. You can see the, it's a metal building, it's kind of shaped like a T, but the bay is back behind it and the office space in the front, and the very front will be bricked, as you see here. This is what you see from the front parking lot, and then the side view is what you'd see if you continued on past the front into the side parking lot, the the other side would face towards the tree line. It does have a wraparound driveway back there, but this is what what you will see upon the entrance. And you can see the added bay doors at the at the very end back there, we added that bay and that expansion. There's also a little bit of a mezzanine right up here that we have for storage that you cannot, you cannot see here. Located in the building, I did not put the floor plan in here because it wasn't very readable, but we have locker rooms for for the guys, we have work stations, we have a very large break room, and eleven offices, as well as a dedicated skater room and a dedicated training room.
Skater?
Skater.
Oh, skater, okay.
Yeah, that's where we keep up with our water system, supervisory control and data acquisition. This is the progress we've made so far. Erosion control was established, mass grading was done at the site, all the underground utilities were put in, the water and sewer lines essentially, there's a little bit of storm work that had to be done as well. The concrete pier has been drilled and poured. The pad, earthwork and construction, rough plumbing and forming gray beams are in place. So the next steps would be, we have to do a little bit of work for for the road to make sure we meet our fire requirements, and we'll be able to start going vertical. This is the current condition of the site. I know it doesn't look like much, but what you see here is is the the gray bean trenches are poured on where the, or not poured, but are dug and formed with on top of the piers, but they've covered those ditches with the plastic because they were concerned about rain and didn't want them filling up with water. But the rough plumbing is also under there. This is the schedule, this is the latest and greatest schedule that shows all the all the different stages we got to go through, the date we're caring about being down here, it's the final completion in March. Any questions?
Looks great.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I wish I had the vertical stuff to show you guys, you know, but we ain't got there yet.
What are the, what are the top few items on the critical path right now in order for continued scheduled adherence?
Honestly, right now, our our number one scheduled adherence issue is we've got to get, we got to stay on on top of getting this fire lane in on time to keep, to get back vertical, is meeting that requirement. They've already changed out the crew to to, and we've seen a market improvement since that happened.
Right.
So this is the latest schedule they did, they did give us with the change order, did go to three hundred and thirty days. It's from from March, that would have put us at mid February, and we've had twenty something rain days. So they're, they're trying to adhere to their their contract, but that 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 is our biggest challenge right now, is the concrete work for the fire lane.
Okay. Nothing on the material acquisition side or anything?
Not that I've been told, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Brian.
I've been out there a number of times, and rain really, really puts a massive hindrance on the progress, so.
That area really soaks it up. Yeah, we, I went out there the last time it rained and watched them bury a very large piece of equipment.
Lots. Very good. Thank you. Council, any other questions for staff? No other questions? Thank you, Mr. Creed.
You're welcome.
I got a question.
No comments from the chamber, I'm sorry. You know, you know very much that I appreciate you, but unfortunately, it's not a, not an open, open public hearing. All right, moving into agenda item five dot E, this is discussion regarding goals for the park board. So this is teed up to me. And really, you know, ultimately, with this, with the park board and with some of the things moving forward, I do think it's important that, Mr. Alexander, that we that we get some exposure to, I know the PATH committee has been diligently working on different sponsorships and concepts and all of those things for for what different sponsorships could do, whether it be within the park or secondary stuff. So I think it'd be good to get some, get some visualization to where they've been and where they're headed with some of that in the coming weeks, in some of our next meetings. The one thing that I wanted to do was to kind of open up some dialogue with the council because obviously, you know, the body, we we direct this this park board and and their direction, and so so I wanted to make sure that we have some open dialogue behind that. So so trying to start it off, I think one thing that, and you guys tell me your thoughts, but, you know, over the years, you know, I've I've sat in council meetings and I've seen a number of things that have been funded, whether it been with with an engineering firm working on design. One thing that comes to mind would be, you know, we we own a, we own a piece of property kind of in front of Chandler's Landing, and there are a number of years ago, the the city funded to have some conceptual designs done, and I know of two that are currently archived, and I'd like to see or make the suggestion, depending on what your thoughts are, I'd like to see maybe that be pulled from the archives and maybe that become an opportunity for the park board to to maybe work with the PATH program and and try to find some donors that would like to fund that project. You know, as you do come into Heath, we do have a monument. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the small monument that's on your left-hand side as you are coming up to the light, Chandler's, but there, there is a small monument, it's pretty dated, but this would be a much more grand monument on the right-hand side. I think at the time, it kind of, one of them mirrored kind of a modern-looking sail sailboat that I thought was pretty, pretty intriguing. And so it's things like that that I think would be good. I know the city's already spent money on certain things. You know, Pocket Park is a, is a prime example of a park that unfortunately did not take shape. We've got infrastructure that we've got to address, and but the park, the park board at the time worked feverishly to create a design, and I believe they went to bid, and the bids were a lot higher than what they thought. I'd like to see the park board maybe really dissect that and see, hey, how did that, how did that park become something that, you know, might have at one point been a two hundred thousand dollar park? I think when they went to bid, I think they kind of ballooned up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar Pocket Park, and so it it lost some traction. And then kind of as a last conceptual, I think it would be good, you know, for us to kind of talk directionally about the park board, right? The park board, they're, they're talking about doing a workshop. I'm super excited to see these talented individuals talk through directionally where they think things should go and then bring it to us. But I think if we maybe start off this relationship with this park board with what do what do we want to see happen? And so that's why I wanted to put this on the agenda. Very well. So at this time, we'll open up the floor, and let's just have a good open dialogue and and try to give some point of focus to staff as they work with that board. Are there any council members that'd like to start?
Mr. Mayor, I think that historically, from my time on the E D C as well as on council, two of the things that we have always tried to address here have been sort of feature parks and trail connectivity. And I think that those two things remain among the the highest priorities we have, although I think that what you're talking about in terms of monuments on the ingress egress parts of the city, it's also critical, right? If you go to the towns like Grapevine and H P and and other premier-type communities, they are, they have wonderful featured areas that you feel like you're in a different place when you drive into the city boundaries of those areas. And I think that finding public-private partnerships and putting the money forward would make a really big difference to the look and the feel and the exclusivity of our city.
High impact, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe I was at that city council meeting where that design was, I guess, presented to the city council back when Justin Holland was sitting over there, you know, over here, and and we had a different mayor, and and my son, who is an adult now, was a Cub Scout, and I was at that city council meeting with him. It's a very long time ago, and I still remember the demonstration of a beautiful monument, right, near Chandler's Landing, as you would enter into Heath to welcome people into our city. And I was not a regular city councilman goer, but for years, I wondered, whatever happened to that? And so I think, moving forward on.
Funding. Priorities.
Let's see if we can't find some. That, I think it's a wonderful idea.
Very good. Very good. Councilman Horn?
I mean, I just think the the park board, the concept itself, is just such a great way for people in the community who have expressed opinions about, you know, what they would like to see, to bring some of these these things to fruition. And I think the biggest thing I'm probably concerned about in just the overall park board is, you know, how do we manage the flow of communication between the park board, the PATH committee, and the city council? And I think just from a structural concept, you know, what, how do we do that? I'm totally in favor of making the city the premier outdoor community that it is, and I think a monument there, because I don't even think people really know where Heath starts.
True.
They don't, so I think that would be amazing.
Very good. And and I would agree with you, and, Mr. Alexander, if we can just make sure that we have good cadence, I know that that was something that, kind of for the first time, we did actually have, over this last year, we had park board, in fact, we brought in the chairman of the park board to come in and speak and give us some updates. We've had the chairman of the E D C come in and speak. So I I know that we're going to see, at least, you know, in the in the current state, is that we're going to see that on an annualized basis. But again, I think looking at that cadence to make sure that we're hearing from that board, and really any of those boards, to make sure that we're keeping that constant communication alive and well. I do know that what what comes out of our meeting does go to them, specifically in their meetings. I would also agree with you wholeheartedly, for those citizens that are at home watching and those citizens that are in the room, get involved. You know, there is no other way to make sure that your voices are heard than than making sure that your voices are heard. And coming to a park board meeting, you're able to to submit public comments, you're able to interact with those board members, no different than you are these elected officials that sit for before you today. So, and I agree with you, I think it'd be great. More communication is better. Facebook comments is great, we appreciate all of you at home that love to do that, but obviously, it's not, it's not necessarily one of the ways that we collaboratively bring those those ideas into fruition. You know, show up at the meetings and get involved and make sure that your voices are heard there, and I believe that that's the best way to do that. Very well.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I also like the idea that you see on highways sometimes of the adopt a spot, and, you know, I've made mention here a few times that it would be great on those areas that, you know, where you have these great roadways, hopefully better roadways in the future coming into the the city of Heath, that, you know, we can make those a bit more distinctive as well, whether those are light standards or standards of, you know, where you have banners that, you know, have a seasonal look to them or or what have you. So, you know, it it's great that we get the two hundred thousand dollar donations, but for people that want to donate in smaller increments, it's good to be able to be fairly specific on where those donations go. And those are some of the little touches. I think they could really continue to help set Heath apart.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, council? You know, another, another thought that that I think that it needs to be good directionally, and 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 I, I think that the park board is is in alignment here, is is looking at, obviously, making sure that they're in tune in real time with what are, what are, what are. are, what are, what are our CIPs doing, right? Where is Hubbard Drive at? So then that way they understand, okay, what are we working on? What's being funded? Obviously, when that roadway continues on phase four, we're gonna see that trail that's already been brought up connect into, uh, this hard corner here. And I think it's important that they actually get those, uh, updates as well. Uh, obviously, we're working with the county, uh, we have set aside for 2 million. I think they need to understand, what are we doing? We're doing a test, uh, uh, some, some geotech testing so we can see if asphalting that road is a long-term plan, but, uh, uh, obviously, if it is and we can work with it and the county agrees with it, it would allow us an opportunity to maybe bring in that trail and have, have some funding there. Uh, because one of the, one of the biggest parts of being a outdoor, premier outdoor lakeside community is getting to the lake through bike and walk, uh, and right now, you kind of gotta, you gotta take a road, uh, you gotta get in a car or you gotta take, you know, the risk of walking and jogging on the road, and Terry Lane is not necessarily the best to, to be on, and so, uh, getting that trail in, I think is very important. We have a number of citizens that are already, you know, gearing up and saying, hey, we'll give you the right-of-way access, we thank you for watching online, uh, or if you're in the room, uh, because, uh, it, it's really gonna take an all-in effort from the community to say, how do we do these things? How do we, how do we do them with limited funding without, uh, raising taxes and, and going that route? How can we do it through donors? And how can we do it from, uh, citizens that are given right-of-way access so we can get these types of amenities in the city? And so I do think that as we look at trails and we look at the communication, I think staff, you guys are gonna work diligently with the park board to keep them up to date on some of those bigger projects, but also, as we look at trails, and you guys tell me what your thoughts are, but I, I look at trails and I go, man, how can we connect the largest, and you guys tell me if this is fundamentally, uh, something you guys agree with, but how can we connect the largest group of, of residents, um, to your town center park? Where, where are your easiest wins, um, as far as neighborhoods? You know, to me, one thing that kind of, uh, stands out is you have, you know, you have, you have a, a number of homes in, in Stonely, right? That's a very large neighborhood and they don't have a connector to actually walk, a- and, and we could, we could say, you know, whether the kids are trying to go to any parks or we're trying to get kids and families to our new town center park, um, man, that's not a very big stretch. I know American National Bank's gonna, uh, have a trail system right on the main road, and then how do we connect the, the Stonely connector to this connector? Uh, let me give you another example is, you, you, you know that Bristol Valley, obviously that was a, a, a platted development a number of years ago, uh, and it's, it's now kind of starting to get developed. And one of the things that, uh, that the developers have done with Bristol Valley is they've committed to, uh, connecting the, the McDonald Road Trail Connector on the roadway, um, where Stonely pretty much stops. And so Falcon Point, uh, and the children in Falcon Point, the families in Falcon Point don't really have a connector, uh, but part of the master trail plan was to have that connected. And so we do have a developer that stepped up and said, hey, you know, if you guys will help me with the, uh, with, with your, your, uh, impact fees for park board, you know, let us, let us connect that. But one of the other conversations that we've had is there's a, there's an easement, uh, that actually is on this, I don't know if it's really the, I guess it would be the west side of that development, how can we connect there in that easement? Because that too was part of the master trail program. So if you actually look at Falcon Point, it dead ends there on, during, on this easement, and then if you're in Stonely and you're in the, kind of the wooded area on the easement, it dead ends and it just stops. So how do we, how do we try to find these easy wins? Uh, and, and we, we have had some, some verbal commitments from the, uh, developers of Bristol Valley, uh, to, to potentially do that connector, and we're, we're looking forward to hopefully seeing that come into fruition. Uh, but I think, uh, as a council, and you guys tell me what your thoughts are, you know, I think, I think if the, if the park board will look for those easy wins, those small connectors, the smallest with the less friction that they can get done with the least amount of expense to connect the largest amount of residents, uh, fundamentally, I think that's a great idea. Would you guys agree with that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Premier premium parks, trail connectivity, and, you know, going where we have, um, a good swath of the population that we can connect to those areas, absolutely.
Okay.
You know, one of the things that you mentioned a, a few minutes ago was Hubbard Drive in phase four, right? And then you come right up here to this intersection and you have that acre that Kay Chamberlain dedicated-
Yeah.
-on behalf of her husband, um, the late Joe Chamberlain, uh, to the city, and it would be great to have that as a trailhead or, uh, some monument area or, or a nice park. That's also a key entrance into our downtown overlay project, which I know we're gonna talk about tonight as well.
No, to- completely agreeing, so that is another piece of property, uh, that was dedicated to us a number of years ago. Um, and, uh, and two, I do think as we talk about communication, uh, you know, I talked about Stonely, I mean Heath Goffin Yad is a, is another, uh, good example of a community that's, that's, uh, has trails in their future state that I know staff is currently working with them on, uh, you know, and where that trail on the, on the, kind of the lakeside part will connect, and I think the park board needs to know where we're at on that, uh, and where, where's the city, uh, and the, uh, the developer with HGYC, where are they at with that? What are their timelines? Because as, as they kind of are tasked with focusing on, okay, what's the priorities in being in a premier outdoor lifestyle community and trails, well, again, that's no different than Hubbard Phase Four, Terry Lane, and now you got HGYC. Uh, and so we want to see that connector happen. Uh, there's, again, it goes through, uh, McCrummon Estates, uh, on, on the, on the backside of that community and dead ends. Uh, however, that dead end is connected to a developer's property-
Yeah.
... that, that could and should and will at some point, uh, be all interconnected with trails. And so I think if the park board is in those updates and party to what's going on there, I think that would help, uh, dramatically. The other, the other, the other thing that I would like to, to focus on, you know, town center park, I'm very, uh, you know, I'm very pleased, I know it's been a, a rocky road and I know, you know, I, I probably would've loved to seen some, some wells drilled before a town center park, but, uh, we're here and we're excited about this town center park, it's gonna be a staple and legacy, and I'm very thankful to, uh, to those that worked on it to get it to where it's at today. Um, however, it's, it's also missing a, a few things. You know, you've got a baseball field that, that, you know, frankly, uh, those of you that might've heard me stump about, man, we don't have any baseball fields in this town and that baseball field, you couldn't never play on it, uh, because it was always flooded. Uh, so again, that's why there's a lot of underground utility infrastructure that's had to be done for drainage, uh, so that, that also made that, that town park, uh, pretty, pretty, pretty expensive. Um, however, when you look at the baseball field, uh, I don't believe in the plans, there's an outfield fence. And so I, I do think that, that elements that the park board identifies within this town center park, I, I would like to see them, and you guys tell me what your thoughts are, let's look for those opportunities too, 'cause to me, it, it'd be fairly easy, I think, for, there's a lot of baseball lovers, uh, uh, in this town and, and many actually that played professionally, uh, I, and, and I, I know there's a number of businesses too. I thi- I think there's an opportunity to get sponsors that will happily put in a, a fence, for an outfield fence. Uh, and, and so I, I think maybe the direction too we should give to the park board is, hey, look for these opportunities within this town center park, although I want you to look outside, look at the monuments, look at what we spent money on, look at those designs, be familiar with it, understand the trails, but hey, let's look at this park and look for those easy wins too.
I think at the end of the day, it's such a target-rich environment, there are so many go-getts, it's like, where do you start? And I think that the citizens of this town, you know, one could argue, what's a higher priority, et cetera, but we're gonna come up with, or they're gonna come up with and force rank this series of objectives, and it's about execution then.
Yeah.
And people are going to want to get behind things that they see being completed.
Right.
And not just talked about, but done.
Yeah.
Right? So trail connectivity, monuments, the, you know, all, all the other things we're talking about, people are gonna want to see those things happen to improve the livability of Heath.
Well, and, and to that point, kind of part of this discussion too, to really refine, you know, I, I mean, I've listed kind of five things, I mean, you, you can have a, a, a board or a body of people that come in and they go, hey, you know, I live in this one neighborhood over here and I'd really like to see a park here. You know, or hey, you know, there's, there's something that I've always wanted to see and let's, let's put something in at Terry Park and, uh, create something completely unique. That's okay, I'm just saying, I think for us, we need to probably dial them in to maybe these five things, I mean, mon- monument, it may seem vast, but man, when you get seven volunteers in a room, I mean, they can really, they can really shock you with how far, deep and wide that they can go.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so that's why I kind of wanted us to talk about, you know, what are those five primary priorities, uh, and then let them kind of run with it in their workshop. Councilman Ome?
You know, another really good idea that, in my opinion, that we've heard socialized is, is temporary land use. The land that we have that is just sitting there, uh, making some ball fields there, it, looking into the practicality of that, uh, it, obviously you need, a, a field needs to be much different than a mowed pasture, but would it be cost-effective to irrigate that, to put in a real, a, and what's the life expectancy? Instead of just sitting there, maybe we could use it temporarily until we have something better to do with it.
All right, so we got six, so yeah, so, temporary, temporary uses, uh, I mean, we, we can kind of talk about that briefly, right? We've got, um, overall Chris Cooney, I think, some of the conversations that we've talked about, and, and looking for things that we don't have to create the Taj Mahal, let's get some easy wins. So, you know, natural trails, uh, you know, I, I used to, uh, years ago, uh, don't hate me because I used to live on the north side, uh, but, uh, you know, we used to go to Squabble, I believe it's Squabble Creek, and it is really fundamentally just a really cool, you disappear into a whole lot of woods.
It's flood plain.
Uh, and, and, and it's just natural trails all in there.
Flood plains.
Yeah, it's a flood plain.
Not losing anything.
And so I, I look at Chris Cooney, uh, uh, area and I'm like, hey, look, you know, I know that we're gonna be bringing DPS station back there, I know that 1880 is, uh, is scheduled to go in back there, and we're excited about that, but hey, how can we get some more flood traffic back there and open up some of the, the property that we as the city own so the residents can enjoy it? And I think natural trails are an easy, inexpensive way to do that. Uh, I look at, uh, uh, what, what EDC has done and, and obviously we, we did it for, you know, uh, some protections from the state and rezoning and not, not allowing cities to maybe have those zoning, zoning authorities, and so EDC's been very proactive in protecting the city and purchasing some of this land, but obviously we have, uh, you know, the, the property across the street, we used to call it the Goat Farm, there's no more goats, but I still wanna call it the Goat Farm, uh, but it's all gated in, and is there an easy way to maybe turn that into a dog park? So we have something, you know, maybe it's not the long-term use of that property, but man, could we not do something temporarily that doesn't cost a lot of money, that we, that we bring more people outside and, and bring some amenities? So, so again, hey, thanks, but you, you gave us six things, but I, I, I agree, I think the temporary usage of some of the properties that we purchased, I think is a, is a really, really-
I like the field piece, 'cause that can also be easily monetized.
Yeah.
Right? Because there are just simply not enough fields around for the teams that we have from cheer to all the s- uh, other sports teams that we have that have places that they can practice.
Yeah, and a lot of that too is just simply, you know, mowing it, and I know that we've got a number of tractors, not that I was out under the shed counting the other day, uh, doing a full inventory. Uh, Mr. Creed said something about a trash can, I said, well, yeah, I know you got two. I gave you the crazy eyes, like, how do you know you have two over here? But, uh, but no, I, I completely agree, I mean, we, we could maintain or have the park board kind of focus on, hey, what would be some temporary fields? When it is cheering football season or soccer season, I mean, y- you know, granted, the grounds may not be perfect and we're obviously not gonna say, hey, let's go irrigate a bunch of, uh, a bunch of land, however, there might be some easy putts where we're, we're just mowing some areas and creating this common area so people are enjoying more of our property as a city that, uh, that we've purchased, you know, uh, through, through sales tax revenue or, or, and I don't know how it was funded when Chris Cooney Drive was purchased, but, uh, you know, the residents purchased that in one way or another, so.
Something tells me that when this park board comes back, their list is gonna be voluminous.
Yeah, well, that's why I said, hey, six, six-
I agree.
-high-level, six high-level macro items, I think is, is good direction if you guys are all in agreement.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I think it's great that they establish priorities and that we help them, you know, kind of play out our vision. I also think along the course of their talking to people and fundraising, that they are gonna come across people that want to give money to a project and that we should offer them that flexibility.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. You know, I, I say, uh, Mr. Alexander, hey, they bring, bring anything they'd like to bring, uh, forth to us and-
Yeah.
-go after everything, I just think, you know, for this, it was just, hey, how can we do some ideation, uh, with, with the council, make sure that we give them some form and, and, and function, but again, you know, we want them to feel free to, you know, paint with broad strokes, I mean, you can, you know, we, we used to have a, a farmer's market that we, we don't have anymore. Uh, and so obvi- uh, obviously that was due to funding, uh, and due to budgetary constraints, uh, and I don't know if any of you guys ever went to that, but we used to go every year, uh, there used to be little concerts out there, I mean, you wanna talk about homegrown, I mean, whenever we're all pulling our trucks and, and SUVs onto the pasture over here, uh, and tailgating, I mean, that's what it was.
I think it's also, I, I think that particular piece is a management issue as well, or lack of having the right resources in order to-
Sure.
... manage, promote, and, you know, grow that kind of in the right way.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, and I think that that's something that hopefully we'll see in the coming years, uh, within the budget and, and hopefully look for that. I mean, uh, last but not least, I mean, we have a, I mean, this park to maintain, it's gonna be anywhere from 200 to 300,000 dollars worth of maintenance just to keep up with it and do the trash purring and, and, you know, weed, de-weed, mow, all the things, whether it's in-house or it's third-party or however it's being ma- maintained, um, and, and them looking for resources to do that, I think is very important.
Well, you know, although that didn't end up in this year's budget, I think that, that, that will probably be seen.
It will.
Because we need to professionalize that, um, as a service offered within our city.
Agreed. I agree. Are there any other comments on that?
Make sure that dog park is on your list.
Well, I love the-
I dragged a rock along.
Oh, my gosh, I, I love the dog park thing, I know that, I, I probably, I probably talk about it more than, more than most want to hear about it, but I, I talk about that and natural trails and, man, we gotta get some stuff going. So appreciate you guys kind of entertaining that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, only thing I want to say is I think we're moving in the right direction on this, especially, you know, I think we're all motivated as a council, we all want to see the best for Heath, and like we've all talked about, a premier, premier community, I think we're gonna see a lot of good things that we've put in, already started in place here with the people that we put on the park board, so I'm excited about it. Um, there's a lot of opportunity that we can do here, and I think if they see we're excited about it and they bring us something that we're, then we're all excited, and I think it's gonna get done.
Yeah.
People need to see progress.
Exactly.
Just like when we're talking about our water plan-
Yes.
-our thoroughfare plan and everything else, people need to see progress.
Yep.
And, uh, this is no different.
Nope.
Agreed.
Very good, thank you, sir.
And just, you know, taking pride in your city is, we want everyone to take pride in their property and make it nice, and as a city, we should set that example.
Yeah, I agree. All right, well, hey, thank you guys for letting me have that on the agenda, I just thought it'd be good directionally, uh, as we have this, uh, this, this board, you know, working diligently on, on the behalf of the city, so thank you guys for doing that. We will now move into-
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, just a, a great, great discussion, thank you for the direction, we'll memorialize this and make sure that the park board receives that at some point too. This kind of came up in our discussions regarding the PATH committee, you know, at some point in the near future, we want, we'll want to bring a donations policy to you on how we handle donations.
policy to you on how we handle donations.
Oh, sure.
Because there may be times that council wants to weigh in on whether that donation's going to be accepted or not, you know? And there may be times where we can just accept it without having to come to council. And so for example, somebody would come in and donate stocks. How do you want us to handle that from a policy standpoint? I know I'm getting a little off topic, but we'll be bringing that back to you in the near future to have you weigh in on that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. If anybody would like to donate with Bitcoin.
I'm just throwing out ideas. Steve, there was a donation list at one point in time that was established by the PATH committee on different fixtures in the park too. So
Sure.
If you don't have that, I might have it myself.
This was a list of items that were donated?
That would be done, you could.
Yeah, that, that was what I was referencing as far as
Like the chairs.
The PATH has kind of some sponsorship concepts
Right, that's great.
The park board had kind of worked on.
Yeah.
So maybe kind of bringing that forward to us and letting us kind of see that, I think would be good.
You bet, you bet. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Councilman Myers. If there are no, no further comments, then we'll move into the next agenda item. All right, moving into agenda item 5.F, this is discussion on the Town Center Overlay District regarding the Architectural Review Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission. This kind of has the same flair, you know, kind of really just, first off, allowing us some open dialogue, some connectivity, so we can give some good direction. So if you all will, and I know that all of you have seen the Town Center Overlay District Design Book, this was created, I believe, back in, is it 2019? Something like that, right?
Yes, Mayor, yes, something like that.
Well, hold on, here's the draft, it says 2022. I think it actually started back then.
Yeah.
Because they did a number of surveys and a whole lot of work. I believe brought in Kelly Horn that worked on this. And so if you guys will, let's look at, if we'll all turn to page nine in this design book. Obviously, this is fairly light reading, but, but all of you have reviewed it, but one thing that I thought it was important for us to look at, you know, when, when staff is, is tasked with working with different boards, whether it be Planning and Zoning or it be the Architectural Review Board, you know, they serve at the pleasure of the council and, and they understand, hey, their role is to, to take care of and observe what the city's focus is, right? So Planning and Zoning Commission, if you talk to any one of them, they will tell you that the comprehensive plan is their bible and that's what they're, they follow. And then they have all the ordinances, which are the laws that they have to make sure that they apply. And then if you were to talk to Architectural Review, they're, they're looking at the integrity of what this town is supposed to look like. And, and I do know that recently, we do have American National Bank that's, that was approved a number of years ago with, with the council previous to us, and, and that's going in at the hard corner right at 550 and 549. I know that there was, under, under our leadership, there was a rezoning for the property on Heath Hawk Drive. And so there's going to be things that do come to the ARB and then progress through Planning and Zoning and then do, end up coming to us. And I, I think it's very important that the council gives some strategic direction for these boards to kind of understand, because you have these governing documents, right? But as you'll see inside of these government, governing documents, if you'll bear with me, Town Center Overlay District, as you can all see on the map, it's, it's two, two of the primary properties in which we've just purchased. It's also this property in which we sit and then a few other properties. And, and obviously, the Chris Cooney Drive, which is the, the reserve, which is the EDC, is not in what is called the Town Center Overlay District. And then we also know that the, the shop group that purchased the property right next to Tom Thumb in between the high school, that is not in the Town Center Overlay District. But as you guys recall, they did say in the PD, in their request for rezoning out of Ag, they said, hey, we'd like to follow your Town Center Overlay District and your guidelines. So, so what I'd like to point out is just, just a little bit of how it describes, you know, the features and the characters of this, of this design. And, and what you'll see is, is kind of a, let's call it the farmhouse chic and then the historic Texas. So, so there's kind of two elements you'll also see in the map. These are ju, these are not mandates, it's just, hey, these are the potential to, to have these placements, right? And then here's some potential placements to combine these two different styles. And so I kind of just wanted to tee up the conversation. Mr. Gonzalez, kind of, kind of walk us through what some of the, the city's new conceptuals of what that could look like? And then we'll dialogue and kind of say, hey, that's directionally where, where I think this needs to fall, or maybe let's question it and have some dialogue. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, members of the council. And very important, this is a very important step in this, in this process and kind of a segue as well from, from the park, you know, because that, that has everything to do with the, with the overlay district. Once this is developed, you're looking at folks who are in the park, they're going to come right across the street and enjoy shopping, enjoy restaurants and so forth. So this is, this is a very important piece in our, in our town center. And one of the things that you'll, that you do have in your packet for the guidelines, this is the conceptual idea of what, what this could look like. And so, once again, it's just a rendering that this is what it could look like, but not necessarily. And so when you take a look at what the historic Texas and the farmhouse chic is, you know, this is, this is what's important from this concept is what, what is it that we do want on the ground? And so this is an important meeting for me to have a discussion about this because I'm, quite frankly, I'm, I'm the first one to see anything before it even comes before ARB or P and Z, and then, and then ultimately up to the council. And so it's important for me to, to understand, and that way I can give that direction to a prospective developer or property owner, what is it we're looking for on the ground? And so what, what I would like to do is just go through some of these. I have some, some images of farmhouse chic as well as historic Texas to take a look at and see if we can just talk about what it is that we would like to do. Eventually what I want to do is be able to present that back to the P and Z and ARB and see if we can get in alignment, so to speak, and also to help me understand what we're looking for. So with that, and on the page that you're, that you're on now, you can see there's certain elements here from an architectural standpoint, what we're looking for when you take a look at historic Texas, that's fairly easy to identify. When you, when you see this, you're looking at brick and stone, when you're typical downtown, this is what you would see. It's something similar to this or what they call tripart division. That's just, all that means, there's a base, a middle and an upper, upper portion on architectural visibility. Those are generally two stories or three story buildings. We don't allow three story buildings here based on the code, and a two story would require a CUP. So if you see anything like this that comes in, you're typically not going to see a, you know, probably a single story, a single story historic Texas look. That probably is just a little out of character, but you can have some of that blend in as you see right here where you have different heights that are associated with, with that. But also, and one thing I do want to point out here as well, when you take a look at a farmhouse chic, you can see some of that from the gabled elements or your pitched roofs. Those are typically going to be your farmhouse chic. So as we walk through this, you'll see that your farmhouse chic usually has wood, stucco, cementous, cementitious fiber board and pitched roof. Some of them do have flat roofs, and you'll see some detailing as well with this. But the overall, what, what the guideline here is looking for is an overall, a Texan feel, a rural, for the, for a rural community, and there really, that's what we're looking for. And, and so when we gather that, that creates that sense of place in, in the core of the city when we have this developed. So when we take a look at this, this is in your packet as well, giving you different elements of what historic Texas could look like, where you have the HT here, here, and, and then a combined historic Texas and farmhouse chic. This being farmhouse chic, farmhouse chic as well, and then also some other elements of a farmhouse chic where you have some outdoor patios and lighting and so forth. And so this is what a developer is going to look, look to and look at to see what it is that the city wants. And so I want to be able to convey what, what we need to have on the ground for, for these type of elements. So this is, this is a, I'm just going to run through some of these.
Mayor, can we ask questions during, during the course of this, or do you, would you prefer we wait till the end?
Yeah, if you, if we could kind of hold off
Yes, sir.
And then kind of run through some imagery.
Yeah.
If you guys would though, just kind of make note of items that you might have moved in.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, and so, and thank you, Mayor. And, and some of these, I'll run through these fast. We will go back to some of these as, as you need to, till we can take a look and see if there's any questions that you have. But this is a typical downtown that you would typically see. You've got three story buildings, you have different, differing heights here, differing elements here for, from a historic perspective, for, you know, whether those may be motifs or window designs, balconies and/or canopies that are over, over this. But one thing that you will see on downtown are large windows, and, and that's a feel of a downtown. So if you go to any, any historic Main Street, you'll see this type of setting as well. So is this something that we're looking for in the Heath Town Center Overlay District? So just some things to think about there. This is more along the lines of a farmhouse chic. You can see that from the pitched roof. And you've got the silo that's sitting, what's the name of, the name of the facility here? Silo. So you have a silo back here, grain silo, and, and just some other elements that you see here with the, with the small canopy above the door. And, and other window treatments here with some lighting, downlighting as well. And just some individual signage that could, that could separate a, a property from another one to give some, give some visibility. And the outdoor seating, as you can see here, that, that makes it a charming place, a unique facility to be able to come to. And once again, you have large windows, so I think that's one thing that's important as well. And of course, pilasters and other items like that that you see. Once again, another different, different look here where you have a high pitch as well as a flat roof design with some railing. Never been here, but it looks like some ladders, looks like this is an outlook area. And also with, with the awning that's over the top and a, it looks like that may be an area, you've got some sidewalks here, maybe an area where there's some walkability in here, which is an important concept that we certainly want to have in our overlay district, is to make sure that we do have that connection for walkability, not only to the reserve, but also for those folks who come from the park to come across and also in various areas throughout. And so it's important for that. Windows, once again, window treatments, awnings as well, gives a lot of light that you can see here and the visibility inside, that way they can see, hey, if they have an interest in walking in as they're walking by, or if they're driving slowly through the area and they see something of interest, they can pull in and, and, and take, take part in that particular facility. And once again, another one with some, just some interesting design elements that you see here that stands out. Now, this right here is the concept for the 1880, for the reserve. And what I'm showing, it's just going to be the exterior, there's a beautiful facility here. And so I think you, it has some other elements that are associated with this as well, where you can see the inside here, some outdoor seating, and, and they have some interesting decorative items on the interior as well. And then outdoor lighting, specialty lighting is what, really what you want to see here, downlighting and some streamers for stream lighting as well. And just areas of interest for folks to be able to take a look and, and be able to sit down and partake with that. Same thing here, outdoor seating with a pavilion there to the left. And farmhouse chic is, once again, is what this look is. Totally different look when we get to the historic Texas. Now, these next few slides are going to be, these are, Suzanne has put these together, so I want to thank Suzanne. She's working with the EDC on bringing forward some, some concepts for, for some farmhouse chic as well. And she provided some of these, and this gives you a kind of a storefront that you can see with the, with the decorated awning with the, with the various colors that is an attractive item for folks who, from a visible, from a visibility standpoint when you're driving as well. And once again, lots of glass. This is cool, just a barn, you know, it looks like a barn, but this could be a, a commercial setting as well too, for a restaurant or whatever other type of facility we have, a retail facility here. And traditional, this is probably more, more of a, a contemporary farmhouse look that you see with the awnings or a roundabout as well as some stairways. And once again, lots of glass, so I think that's important that we have that here. Yeah, this is probably like what they call the four square, where you have your, your, your different areas, different rooms, but this is in a commercial type of setting as well with, with gabled elements and, and outdoor seating. Same thing here, except with the flat roof design. And another one similar to, but looks, looks almost like a home, could be a home, but this is something that we would, you know, have as a commercial inviting. It's inviting to see something like, to be able to come in and enjoy whatever that, that may be there. And once again, another one with, with different elements here, it looks like chimney elements on the side as well as a large gable entry. And so this right here are historic Texas, these are from historic towns. And so I thought I'd bring this forward to you, just to take a look, to see, obviously these aren't modern, they're, they're modernized, but this wouldn't be a modern historic Texas. But just to give you an idea of historic Texas, Texas, what that looks like. And once again, defining this with a, a, a base, which is your lower floor level and a middle, you've got transom windows here, and then of course, you have some other window, window treatments here with them being arched and so forth, and motifs that you have on the upper flat roof as well. Same with this. And so this is, that's the kind of style you would see for a historic Texas look. Traditional downtown that, that you would see. And, and so this is where you may have a single story structure here, but if you have something like this, it'd be a single story on a historic building, historic Texas building, you certainly want to have something probably next to it that's going to give some relief to the two taller buildings and, and having something there as opposed to having just a single story all the way across. I don't, I don't know how that would look, that would, that would be different for me anyway. Once again, historic, some awnings as well that you can see with, with patterned window treatments all the way across and some pilasters that give, give a little bit of relief and roof treatments as well on the flat roof. And this is more along, this looks more like a, a modernized corner. I don't know where this is, but it, it looks kind of cool with the, with all the glass that you have as well. And of course, some of the trees that you have up here that give some interest on the, on the top part of the building facade. I believe that's all that I have. Nope, I'm sorry, forgot. So the, we, the farmhouse chic. Now, this is a home, but this is farmhouse chic, this is just to give you the idea of all the, once again, the elements that we're talking about with the, this is probably a cementitious fiber siding on here with, with a metal roof, probably galvanized metal roof, standing seam metal roof with, with dormers and gabled elements here, and of course, a covered area with its, with colonnades. And so this, this is a nice looking facility, could be a commercial facility here as well. This is a heavy, this is, this looks more like a heavy building with the way this is treated with, with, with the way they have this roof line here and your gables here. But once again, this is more of a modern farmhouse chic, and this is more of a traditional farmhouse chic, probably something that you would want to see here with the, with the metal, black metal framing, gabled roof elements once again, and, and probably standing seam metal roof as well. This is supposed to be commercial, then I noticed there was a car parked here, and so this looks like a residence, but it said commercial, commercial when I pulled it up. So think of it as commercial. And this is representing both. It looks like a residential to me as well, once again, but it just gives you the idea of, of a different style roof here and, and that it's not a gable, I think this, I think this is a hip roof with some dormers and so forth. And then of course, you have the gabled element here as well. That right there will be the end of what I have from, from the images that we have. And so just like to open up for discussion to see if there's anything, I can answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you for doing that. You know, ultimately, our goal is to kind of, kind of look at from a high level, you know, where, where are they seeing things, you know, as far as, you know, historic Texas building as well as a farmhouse chic? And then maybe let's give a little bit of some finite direction, because I, I know that the idea is to kind of storyboard, I'm very appreciative of Suzanne and the work that she's done on some of those renderings. And then also too, some of the concepts have been is, hey, let's take some of the imagery and let's actually use it in some of the offices and on the walls, so then that way we can kind of envelop that future state of Heath. So Councilman Dodson, you had a question?
Sure. So David, you know, there's been some discussion, obviously the downtown overlay is codified, but I think some of the recent discussions has been, well, how about in developed areas or future developed areas, commercial development outside of that, right?
Yes.
So, you know, just like the group that was in that had the less than attractive options that they brought forth the first time, my understanding is it wasn't a whole lot better when it went to ARB the next time, and I'm really disappointed at that, but should we make this downtown overlay then kind of Heath commercial development and not just downtown overlay? If we really want the look and feel throughout our city, shouldn't it apply to the city and not just the downtown overlay district? I guess that's a question.
Yes, sir, yeah. And, and I, I think that's a, that's a great question. And because of the limited amount of commercial that we actually
Yeah.
have here, our, our comp plan, when we did the update, actually calls out to have, to use the guidelines that we have here, just from an architectural standpoint, architectural vision for farmhouse chic and, and historic Texas to be, to be used in those areas that are, were redeveloped and/or foredeveloped.
So I think Councilman Dodson's question
Yes.
would go to Mr. Alexander and/or council. I believe what you're asking for is, is there I believe what you're asking for is, is there a way to create an ordinance in which would require the same look and feel for Town Center Overlay District through any of the other commercial properties throughout the city?
Yeah, I think it would, yeah, that's correct, Mayor. I just think it would relieve ambiguity with regards to what the proposed developments come back and look like, so that we don't have to have them go back two or three times and then figure out exactly what we're talking about.
Well, I think ultimately, in this circumstance that you're actually referencing, that already happened. I mean, that specifically happened, and this was the document that was actually given.
Right.
So, I think you're still gonna get that, even if there is a path forward with some type of ordinance?
You're right, I mean, you know, look.
But that's why we're trying to refine this vision board, so we can be fairly specific.
I think it's easy for developers to hit that easy button and come back and show us commercial boxes that they wanna pop businesses into, because it's easy for them to do, it's very predictable, doing something like we're talking about, not certainly this, but the other things on Historic and farmhouse chic, you know, are gonna take a little bit more effort. And I think that we want the developers that have approved projects to take that effort and bring us something that's really unique, and we should categorically deny anything that's not.
Sure, agreed, but to the question, I mean, is this something that you could codify as an ordinance through the city?
So it would need to be an expansion of, that's the function of the overlay district, is to get you these architectural design standards that you want, and so you'd need to expand the overlay district. I'd have to look and see if there's any kind of requirement for it to be contiguous. So let's say if you have, you know, your main commercial development and you have some often another part of the city, can we make it apply if it's not contiguous? Without that, the way to do it is a development agreement.
Okay. I would also, to Mr. Gonzalez's point, you only have, outside of the Town Center Overlay District, you have the reserve, which, let's go ahead and add in this property that you just referenced, the shop route that's on Heath Goff Drive.
Right.
That's ultimately all Chris Cooney Drive around. And then there's a small pocket that was in the original PD, that's right outside of Heath Golf and Yacht, it's a tiny piece of property. And then the rest of it is next to Sanders Church, and I don't know that that's 14 acres. So that's it, that's all you really have. So just so we're, you know, all on the same page, and again, just for the record, none of that was created by this council, that is, you know, goes, dates back to 2018, and the part that's at Heath Golf and Yacht, that small section right outside of that, that goes back to, I don't know, 2005, I believe, in their original planned development, I'm not sure, so. So I don't know that the footprint is very large. I think that the primary part of what you're trying to accomplish is technically what's set in front of it.
Yeah, but what we have to develop, I just think that we need to rally around having it developed with a consistent look and feel, so.
But that goes back to what we required when it was voted on for the AG.
Yeah.
You know, it was voted on, not unanimously, but it was voted on and approved, and it was in the PD. And essentially, this body required exactly what you're referencing.
Yeah.
So you can do it through ordinance if council comes back, and I mean legal council comes back and says that that's a potential possibility, if not, then you would do it through the primary mechanism that's been utilized in that the PD.
Right. The second question I have is that, when your presentation started, there was very clear delineation between Historic Texas and farmhouse chic, or however you wanted to define that. As you went through, and as we got towards the end, you really had some modern things in there, and it was like, one of these things is not like the other, right? So, you know, are we talking strict interpretation of this? Or what does variable interpretation look like, and who makes those decisions? Right? Because some of the pieces, I mean, you just have to go back a few slides, and you're like, is this really, is that really?
That's what we're doing tonight, Councilman Dodson.
Okay.
My goal here is exactly that, is because that's the hardship. And not just the hardship on staff, I mean, that's the hardship on these volunteer boards to try to, you know, find alignment. It's also the hardship that, you know, in this circumstance, you've got a property owner that's trying to put in something, and they wanna find the right mix, and they hear us all say, hey, we want it to look like Town Center Overlay District, hey, follow that, get there, and then we kinda send them back, and then we put them into, you're gonna go to ARB and get some counsel, or what, I think what we're trying to accomplish tonight, maybe let's go through that slide deck and just go thumbs up, thumbs down, you know, that works, that doesn't work, and then that way, when we leave tonight, he's got this storyboard, this vision board that he can then apply with the boards, as well as any developer or property owner that comes in for guidance.
So do you want us to go through these slides and do thumb up, thumb down? I mean, is that what we'd like to do? Is that what you'd like to do?
Any direction from council at this point?
Yes.
Because David's planning a meeting with, he has a meeting scheduled with the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about this very issue, and so any direction council can provide to us to be able to take back to the P&amp;Z, take back to the Architectural Review Board and say, this is the vision of our city council, this is kinda what they're looking for. So maybe we can have that alignment between city council to P&amp;Z to Architectural Review Board as they deal with these developers.
And to answer your question, as you can tell, this is complicated, you know, when you're trying to drill it down, and so, yeah, I think maybe an exercise of, hey, let's run through the slides and go, I mean, obviously what I'm looking at here is kind of a negative on, okay. So if we want to start the exercise, I think we'll put this into a workshop.
Can I just say something? As I've looked at all of these, my biggest concern is that these two styles are very, very different. I like both of them when done well, Historic Texas and farmhouse chic. I like the example here where the two are combined on page nine, I think that's a classic, you know, lots of big windows and architectural detail, and you had a few slides that showed that as well, that I think is great. This is the ugliest slide, I think, I don't know, maybe that's just me.
This could be at the Salem trial. This could be at the Salem Massachusetts, this is hideous.
But it is a little, my biggest concern between the two designs is that it could feel disjointed, you know, to have two very different looks in different parts of the city. I like the combination personally.
Yeah, so again, we can kinda tackle some of that, I've got some ideas kinda as we round out this exercise, but I agree with you. And I do think that that's where it can be confusing to the boards, is they're going, well, you know, okay, this property that we're referencing doesn't fall in the Town Center Overlay District, well, you know, if you kinda look at this map, and this map says, and again, I'm going back to, you know, Mayor Elam's days and a number of these council members that all worked on this document, and we're trying to be good stewards of the history here of the city, and this map says, hey, maybe in this section this is ideal, maybe in that section this is ideal. Well, you get to Chris Cooney and you get to this property, and it's like, hey, we wanna follow it, but man, the map doesn't tell us, or the board, what that needs to be, that's where it gets really weird. So I think there's two elements that we've gotta help maybe define, like, how do we marry these two together so this doesn't look like a hodgepodge, but also too, how do we, how do we define something that Chris Cooney can maybe make sense when these next meetings that are coming up happen? Fair game? So if you guys have just entertained the exercise, I think we've kind of nixed the last two, what are our thoughts on this slide here? Well, let's go, hold on, let's go.
Is that fake?
Okay, so we're just gonna skip through anything that's residential, so go back to the, I think you need to go, the other one. Okay, so if this is commercial, to me, I think this is definitely farmhouse chic, everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Okay, very good, next slide. You know, go back, you're right there, Bo, okay. All right, so to me, I think this looks more Montana, Montana, Mar.
Yeah, and modern, way more modern.
Okay.
It doesn't match.
All right, so everybody's on the same page there, we can go back to the next slide.
Where's the restaurant that we, was it?
It's coming up, it's today. This is a residence, so I think we can kinda move past that. All right, so here's Historic Downtown, thoughts?
I like the combination of lots of windows, and with the detail though, I think that detail is important, without it, it's just.
Yeah, a lot of brick detail, I think brick detail kinda helps it stand out. I would agree, I think that, I think that if you're not careful, the Historic Texas without lots of windows is very, can be a little bit dated.
Yeah, dated is what I would say about that.
And so, you know, not that we wanna be modern, this goes to your point, right, Councilman Thurgood, that, you know, we also have a, we really have Tom Thumb that is pretty modernized, I guess, with a lot of lean-to roofs and other things. So I would agree, I think this looks good as far as Historic Texas, but I'm really notating the windows that make it, I think, nice.
Right. I think like Councilman Thurgood said, I think it's the details, the gingerbread up top that really kinda makes that.
Very good, okay. So windows and brick detail, go ahead. Not, I don't think that's a good fit.
No, no.
Okay, everybody good?
It's the whole entire, yes?
All right, I think this, I like the detail, again, we need to be careful with the windows, you know, obviously, single-pane windows would dress that up, modernize it a little bit, but I do like the details. Everybody agree?
Yeah, some better lighting fixtures.
It's like any downtown in small town.
Yeah, I think it comes into Thurgood's point, Councilman said, well, you know, maybe some, maybe some downlighting a little bit, you know, obviously a canopy could jazz that up a little bit.
Yeah. There's some missing details, but there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, single-pane windows would dynamically change the look of that. Okay. All right, thoughts, council?
You know what I like about that, on page nine, the one that says FC and HT, it kind of reminded me of these pictures. It's done better on page nine, personally.
I agree, I agree.
But I, that's why I really do like the combination of the two styles.
I think the painted brick is really the difference there.
Yeah, so it's the structure, the structure is that Historic Texas, I like what you said, Councilman. It's, but it brings in the coloring of the shabby chic.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
The coloring is shabby chic with the Historic Texas look. And it looks fresher and new, it's a modern Historic Texas.
Yeah, so maybe what I'm hearing you say is, hey, let's just be a little careful on the Historic Key Elements page of eight, be a little careful with your neutral colors with ground floor canopies and awnings, maybe just be careful with that, if you get too much of that, you're gonna get some very dated product.
That's true, yes.
Everybody agree on that?
Agreed.
Okay, all right.
One thing I would like to ask as well as we're looking at this, is some have tiebacks and some don't, is that a preference here, or just, I mean, this has some long tieback, but some do not have tieback, but this is more presented or profound, so I don't know if that was.
I think anytime you see that, it lends itself to, is that an architectural element, or is that a structural element?
Right.
When we go fire to fire, we see those, is that holding this building together?
Right.
So I think when you add things like those cables, it makes it look more old, and that's kinda what you're trying to do.
Right, yes.
So I would have a preference for more of that.
I concur.
I really like the fact that it shades the storefront too, right, which is always nice.
Right.
All right.
No.
I don't know what that is.
I like the porch, but, or no, and shifted right away, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm just not sure what I'm looking at there.
It could be, it's too modern the way they've got the front entrance to me.
It's a combination, a weird combination.
If he was to redo the front thing for the front entrance and pop that upper window.
All right, we'll cut that.
I love the outdoor porch.
I do too, I love it.
You might put that in the reserve, but you're not gonna do that.
Right, right, I think it depends on where that's placed.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Too modern.
You're getting it, trying to.
Yes, yes.
All right, so going back, did we say, cut the other one? I do think it is a tad bit on the modern, super-modern side.
That's just not exclusive.
Okay.
And that that's better.
I think that one looks great.
Yeah, me too.
All right, okay.
So we're to the other one.
Yeah. It's a barn, so.
I'm not sure what we're using that for, but.
It looks cool, that's all I like.
A standalone structure, maybe.
Yeah, right.
So maybe cut the barn out, I think this looks great.
I do like that, I love that.
Yeah. I think this looks good.
Yeah, looks good.
And then this is the 1880 vision board.
Concept here.
Love it.
Beautiful.
Yeah, this would be a beautiful building once it's.
Love it, can't wait, beautiful.
Okay.
Love it.
Yep.
Love it.
I think all these right here are great.
Love it, love it.
Magnolia does it well.
Love it, Magnolia does a great job. It's an easy way to do it.
Hard to critique them.
Yes, I think that's, oh, well, okay, yeah, it's just traditional, so.
And I do love that, to me, this looks like, like it's not dated, I mean, it's very well-maintained, it looks very, very fresh.
You can tell there's new windows.
I think the idea is to be very fresh-looking, there's a lot of big windows, again, maybe single-pane would probably clean up the upstairs.
Upstairs, yeah.
And to your point, I believe what makes that look fresh as well, is when you take a look at the street elements, so the street trees, the lighting, the lighting that you would have that would be associated with that, as well as if it was stretched out a bit more, you'd have some outdoor seating as well, and so that's what would create a viable location where people wanna go.
Yeah, and I would just say too, you know, I mean, we do wanna look for opportunities as anybody comes in and gets close to, you know, the Tom Thumb, you know, no matter what anybody's opinion is, that is what is here today, and let's look for opportunities that we can try to find continuity. I think at the end of all of this, our goal is to carry the baton of those that came before us, and show respect, and try to create what's been put in these guides, but then also too, let's look at, even before this guide existed, there were things that were built, and how can we make sure that they're being married together in any way that we can, without over-modernizing the city and kinda being true to some historic opportunities of the city. Okay? All right, great exercise, are there any other questions or discussion from the council?
David, what's been the feedback from the developers that EDC has talked to with regards to our plans for the Downtown Overlay project, and are you at liberty to share any of that information? So I know that there have been some discussions with developers that have developed other downtown projects, so can you share that?
Well, I don't have an application at this point, so, what, I mean, any specific question maybe you might have regarding that?
I'm just wondering about sort of the way in which our downtown overlay is envisioned, has there been any feedback on any consultation with any developers that would help this council think of and look at sort of the way in which this is proposed, and any modifications that may need to be made in order to make this more actionable? Because it's great to have these plans and these beautiful pictures, but if we're never gonna do anything with it, then it's not worth the paper it's printed on.
Well, I wanna be very clear, I, as the mayor, did not bring this forward for Town Center Overlay District as far as what are we doing to go solicit or anything else, that would be EDC's, and that's their charter, and they're working on our behalf, however, I would say, for me, bringing this forward tonight is to make sure that there's continuity between us and our boards. So to that, I think, Councilman Dodson, we can schedule some time with EDC and have the chairman, I don't even know that they've elected their new chairman, I know Mr. Saunders worked on that board for a number of years, and they're waiting on their next meeting, and then once they do have their new chair and they have their first meeting, I think it'd be good to bring them in, so we can hear where things are at.
Yeah.
Fair?
That is fair, and I sense by your trepidation that there is some directive feedback, and I would absolutely like to know what that is.
Yeah, I think, I don't wanna speak for David, but from what I've heard from David, particularly on the P&amp;Z bank, is confusion. You know, they brought their plans to ARB, ARB had a lot of input on that, sent back to the drawing board, and they just weren't sure what they needed to do to meet the style envisioned with the city, so they're seeking direction.
Yeah.
And I think that, from that prompted, hey, we need to get with the P&amp;Z, and have that conversation with them to see what their vision is, and the mayor suggested.
that conversation with them to see what their vision is, and the mayor suggested rightfully so, hey, wait a second, let's start with city council and work our way.
Oh, I'm in, I'm in violent agreement with all of that, right? I think, Steve, my, um, my comment and my request goes to the fact that I, I believe there have been some, um, developer consultations, not paid consultations, but just, hey, give us your feedback from developers that have done this type of thing in other parts of Texas, that I think that we could benefit from knowing what that feedback was.
Sure, we'll get that on an agenda at a later date.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, moving into, uh, Agenda Item five dot G, this discussion of the fiscal year 2025, 2026, uh, proposed budget, Mr. Ayers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, I'm back again. Um, this is, uh, pretty much just opening up to y'all, uh, regarding the FY26 proposed budget, um, just get feedback from you all and the questions you might have. Uh, just to discuss the, the, the changes in the FY26 proposed budget, uh, as discussed earlier, uh, we moved down from the de minimis rate to the voter approval rate, uh, this resulted in a decrease of roughly seven point two million to six point nine million in, uh, property tax revenue, uh, it's 259,000, uh, $25 decrease. Uh, also in the utility capital reserve, um, fund, those, uh, in the FY26 proposed, uh, we had architect, uh, engineering and design costs, uh, showing up in the FY26 budget, but, uh, that's been moved, uh, to the projected, uh, FY25 budget as, uh, originally adopted in the ten-year CIP plan. Uh, the enge, engineering and design, uh, contract should be coming before you, uh, within this fiscal year. Uh, and the just total expenditures, uh, in that utility capital reserve, uh, reserve fund, uh, it, it reduced from, uh, roughly six point two million to four point two million, and the, uh, budget gearing fund balance just remains the same, we just moved that, that, uh, cost from FY26 to FY25. Uh, any questions or comments that you have regarding the, the proposed FY26, uh, budget?
Counsel, at this time, do you have any questions for staff?
Is there anything we can be doing for Mayor, Council, uh, as you're reviewing the budget documents, or if there's information that you need to process, let us know, we're happy to get that to you. Uh, we'll have this type of an item on each council meeting leading up to the adoption of the budget, in case you have items you want to bring forward at the meeting and ask questions about, uh, but always feel free to contact us in the interim if there's information to provide, uh, throughout the year.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to see legal spend called out. Um, that's been a big, um, question by our citizen base over the last several years, and understanding a historical perspective over the last few years, plus where we're at FY versus budget, and where we're at projected, and what that looks like over time, I think will be, uh, really good for us to not only know with this budget, but then also have that reviewed on an ongoing basis.
What I've heard.
Separately built for general city attorney work and locations, so it'd be easy to tell from how things have been previously built, what can be attributed to a location.